I will now call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM here at McAdavis Place St. George. Good evening and welcome to the March 2023 Regular Council Meeting for the Eastern Charlotte Council. This is our third official council meeting for Eastern Charlotte. Welcome and thank CHCO for being here tonight, Dale Wells, Florence Mitchell, and of course, their star, Vicky Hilgarth. In attendance tonight, we have Chris McKinnon and our Assistant Clerk, who is our Assistant Clerk and our CEO, Jason Gedet. And we'll move on to adoption of the agenda. I'll look for motion.
I move to adopt the agenda with the addition of item 11B correspondence from Karen Tracy.
Does it on?
Okay. I move to adopt the agenda with the addition of item 11B with the addition of correspondence from Karen Tracy.
We have a motion on the floor. I need a secondary, Counselor Tid. Question or comment on that motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. And it's passed unanimously. We move on to adoption of the agenda. Number three, conflict of interest disclosure. Anybody who wants to make a disclosure conflict may do so now. Counselor McKay, yeah, just turn on your mic.
According to the conflict of interest, according to the Governance Act, Section 90, Part F, Exceptions to Conflict of Interest, a member or senior officer does not have a conflict of interest and does not violate Section 96 by reason only that a member, senior officer, or family associate is, as the case may be, a person having an interest in land valued in use as farmland or farm woodlot under the Assessment Act or being registered under the Farmland Identification Program under the Real Property Tax Act. At this point, I am not completely comfortable in declaring a conflict of interest until I can formally sit down with the St. George municipal lawyer and explain some things.
So number three is conflict of interest disclosure. So I guess you're disclosing you're not. That's a, I guess that's official.
Until I can formally sit down with the lawyer, I don't know.
Nope, that's all I need to know. Great. We'll move on to adoption of minutes of the previous council meeting. I need, excuse me, folks. February the 15th, 2023, I need a motion to approve those minutes. Counselor Thompson? Counselor Thompson made the motion. Secondary, Counselor Lee. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. Business arising of the minutes. Don't think there's anything tonight. Delegations are none tonight. Seven is reports, and the first one we have tonight is the General Government Report. And I'll go to our CEO, Jason Gedet.
Thank you, Your Worship. General Government Report for the month of February. We've completed meetings with Department of Transportation on the role of the municipality in the rural areas. Public Works has started to repair and reinstall some private lane signs in the rural areas. So this marks the first time that the former municipalities worked crews are out in the rural areas. Request for proposals for Canal Beach. It has been posted and closes April the 7th, so we expect that to come to council at the April meeting. The request for proposal is being put together for janitorial services for our municipal office and here at McAdavis Place. Personnel, we have completed interviews with the full-time Public Works position. As well as personnel, we will be posting one full-time position with the Administrative Assistant Receptionist role. We've also completed the collective agreement with the union, and labor board applications were completed as well. Renovations, Phase One nearing completion of the municipal office. That's School Street in St. George. At this, as time permits, we re-engage a number of dangerous unsightly properties in the former town and village, and that's really all we're doing. And there's been a number of questions recently to staff. We are only focused, our authority right now is only within the former two municipalities. Project pricing for a water break for repair on Riverview Avenue. So we've modified the older project application that we submitted to the province back in 2020, which we never were successful in achieving. And we're just looking at putting some pricing together to finally complete that break. Working on garbage collection overview, which was brought up, I believe, at the last council meeting for a four-week pickup, just trying to do a cost comparison of doing four weeks in the municipality. We completed insurance review and documentation for the full municipality. Our now, our annual cost for insurance and loan for the municipality is over $200,000 a year. Staff is working with the Fundy Graduation Committee on hosting the graduation ceremonies at the Patrick Connors Recreation Complex. We're still continuing to do the ongoing upgrades there as well, lighting, upstairs renovations, ice room maintenance, and computer upgrades, and still a lot more to do there too over the shutdown in summer months. And water, wastewater projects for St. George Black Harbor, the water exploration for both Black Harbor and St. George networks, as well as the, looking at the EIA work for the sewage lagoon for the part of the industrial park upgrades. We also ordered a new mayor's chain. It's been ordered. The two former municipal chains will be updated, cleaned, and put on display. We completed some easement updates with the Granite Town Hotel. We're also working on some drainage mitigations with the property here as well. Inspections and reviews of building and properties transferred from the province, now including, you know, we're now looking at the required repairs of the two of the three, if not all three of the properties that were transferred to the municipality. Working through the changeover of the vehicles as well, that's been a bit of a task. What I guess has been required from the province to transfer their own vehicles to the municipality, that changes each time we go to service New Brunswick. Final notices of over-the-water counts for both networks have been issued over the last week as well. And housing development, we're working on with two potential developers, South Street, Brunswick Street, and as well, just to add to that, another one in there too with the Hillside subdivision. So that is the General Government Report.
Thank you, Jason. Any questions or comments for the council? None? Then we'll move us on to the Building and Planning Report for the Southwest New Budget Service Commission. I'll call on Alex Henderson to come forward.
Thank you, Your Worship. With the planning updates, there's not much to update other than we have a rezoning application, which will come later in your agenda to discuss setting that date for a public presentation as well. Tomorrow and the next day, I'm going to be going to a meeting with other planning directors in the province to discuss the updates to legislation for planning. And some procedural changes have been taking place regarding subdivisions, especially as it relates to department environment and wetlands. So with regards to development, to date, there's only been five building or development permits issued, $184,000 of construction value, one signed permit, two new lots, and these are in Bethel, and a reapproval for one subdivision that had expired in terms of its tentative approval. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments from council? If not, thank you very much for coming tonight, Councils. You're sticking around for the next, okay, thank you. I'm going to go to the fire report, and I'll ask Counselor Mike Thompson to give that report tonight.
We've talked with all three departments for their wants and their needs for the next four to five years. We're taking everything under consideration. There is a need to streamline going forward with three departments all being individualized before. We have to bring them all together. We've also talked to the three departments about interdepartment training. That will happen. It will just take us some time to get to that point. For fire calls, St. George for this month had 17, Black Harbor had seven, and Back Bay had six. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Counselor Thompson. Any questions or comments from council? If not, we'll move on to the Public Works Report, and I'll call on Counselor McCrory.
Thank you, Your Worship. For Black Harbor, they've done their daily chlorine checks at different locations. Arena upgrades and maintenance continues with new light being delivered, 35 LED lights for the hallways and the bleacher platform, dressing rooms and washrooms. Service and maintenance work has been done on some heaters in the main lobby for the arena and entry for the YMCA. General maintenance for mechanical components compressor has been addressed with two different contractors putting together quotes for two compressor overhauls, either gasket plate chiller or heat recovery from Zamboni Water, just to mention a few. All these components are vital to the operation and planning and budget. Also, a PLC upgrade on computers been awarded and getting closer for work to start on upgrades. Waterline leak on Hospital Street affecting number 26 and 28. All notices and instructions were issued with a boil order advisory due to low or no pressure was issued by the province. Repairs were performed to AWWA standards. Flushing and chlorine residual were met, followed by two sets of bacteriological sample results from the St. John Lab. All criteria was met for the Department of Health required for the boiler order removal. General SOP and service for administration is ongoing. Snow events, they were out seven times for plowing and sanding in February. Equipment repairs, one ton needed new cutting edge, and so did the three ton. Back hole needed to replace the cutting edge on the back, installed new bolts and washers. Repairs to the VHF radio, replaced hydraulic hose for stabilizer oil and filter services was done on the new back hole. Parts ordered for brakes on the older back hole, and oil and filter will follow. Trackless universal joints installed on a brake hold-down kit with new shoes on left side, front and new hub seal installed, and a new alternator has been installed. Van has had a new battery installed. Zamboni has been serviced and filters. Garbage truck overheating, performed troubleshooting and found the issue in the wiring and harness plugs repaired and back in service. For St. George, plowing has taken the majority of the time for the month with storm season in full swing. With extra strain on the equipment, repairs are constant and ongoing. Broken or knocked-down street signs are another casualty of the season, or fixes they are found. Also, potholes are appearing more and more, and we are doing our best to stay on top of those. A stockpile of sand is being kept at the Works Department for those needing it. Christmas lights were all removed from the light poles along Main Street. All the Old Town Limit signs have been taken down. They assisted the Fire Department in getting the trucks to the garage for their inspections. Some long overdue maintenance has been started in buildings outside of St. George that are now in the new entity. Renovations continue at the office building to accommodate the extra staff. Water. Total water pump for the month of February was 6.4132 million gallons for an average of 229,042 gallons per day. We had one major water system issue to deal with in February, and that was a break in the main on Brunswick Street in front of the school. The repair went well, but due to the work involved, school has been canceled for the day there, or was canceled. A new chlorine injection lance was ordered and installed at well six to hopefully cure the, any further clogging issues. Sewer. We had to send away another lift station pump to be inspected for repair, this time from Campbell Hill at station number eight. We are still having an issue getting the new pump for station six to sit down in the well properly. It has been brought out, been brought to our, it doesn't make sense, has been brought out to our attention by the salesman who ordered the new pump for us, that we have the wrong adapter bracket, a new one's being ordered. A jet rotor truck was hired to address some issues with the lift stations. Number six had to be cleaned out of grease buildup and a blockage on Cellar Street had to be cleared. The solid blockage was due to a massive buildup of paper towel, and the maintenance supervisor for the True North's operations was contacted and asked to circulate a memo stating personnel should not put that into the sewer system. The sanitary line on Wall Street was inspected with video equipment for blockages due to a local complaint. Decision to jet rod the line was made to rule out any issues with that line that may interfere with its proper operation. Station six at Fundy Bay Drive has experienced some issues that were originally attributed to the float switches that hang in the well and govern the pump operations. Further inspection is showing the problem may be a wiring one with either broken wires or bad connections. We are waiting for better weather and electricity to be free to sort out the operation. Communication issue with station number five was corrected by rebooting two modules inside the station panel. Lab results, seven water samples were received in February, on February 7th for microbiological testing. The identity of the samples and the results are tabled below. There were no chloroforms and no E. coli in any of those tests. Eight water samples received on the 21st for the same thing, and same results, no E. coli or coliforms. Samples, wastewater were received on February 7th. The identity of the samples or the results are given below. Do you want me to read off all these different, two blankies? Oh, okay. All testing results are within our set parameters.
That's it? Thank you, Counselor McCrory. Did a great job. Needless to say, the Public Works crew were busy. I think that's probably an understatement this past month. Jason, would you like to speak on that?
Thank you, Your Worship. Yes, so both work, Public Works crews are now sort of integrated. You know, we're using a variety of different skill sets with our, with our crews. So, you know, we have some guys that are in St. George that are going to Black Harbor to help out with some mechanical problems. You have some of the guys from, from Black Harbor coming in to St. George as well. The DTI meeting I had earlier in this month, both foremen from Blacks and St. George attended those meetings as well. So we're starting to integrate the crew, and, you know, we'll be changing out the name on the side of the doors, but certainly, you know, the two, the two crews are now starting to work together, and it's certainly a good sign.
Any questions or comments from council? Counselor Dedarakas.
Your Worship, may I ask the CEO a question? So it's about the Public's Work Report for St. George. So for the sanitary line on Wallace Street, what was the conclusion? Was it an issue with the line, or was it, was it something else?
Not necessarily grease trappings when it comes to food, but we're often finding that even the dyes, like the Tide pockets, the dishwasher type of packets as well are forming grease in the lines as well. So, so yeah, we will get, we will get some buildup. Typically, we'll try to get those in, with our annual maintenance of storm drains, but sometimes they do build up quicker than, than we expected.
Any other? Any other questions or comments from council? If not, if not, we'll move on. Counsel Payton Pable, I'll have our CEO speak to that.
Thank you, Your Worship. So just once again, much like last month, we're still trying to merge the two financial systems together. Just as recent as this afternoon, I reached out to Town Suite Accounting Systems for an update, certainly said that, that I guess if we had a thermostat on this, I guess I'd set a very high red for me. You know, I wouldn't have expected that back in December, we would still be at a point where the, the systems haven't merged yet, and we really need to merge Black Harbor, St. George, put them together, put our budget information in for this, this year. Right now, everything is being held in a, in sort of a bit of a hold account. And so as soon as that does happen, we'll be able to provide a much more comprehensive report to council. Certainly, any of those full, just line by line by line items are always available to any members of council that wish to, to review those. And, you know, I don't have an ETA. I wish I, which I was expecting to get today from Town Suite. I don't, if we were to switch and go to a different accounting system, by the time we merged over all of the, all the water users from Black Harbor and St. George, just that alone, as well as all of our vendors, multiple months to do that, and then to build out all the general ledger account numbers as well. So at what point, I guess, is, do we say that, you know, Town Suite is, is not going to come good with us? I don't know. I will be escalating my calls to, to get some answers next week, further up the chain with, with that company that's based in Newfoundland.
I just want to say that Kathy Neves and Baby Scott Levitt are doing an admirable job for Eastern Charlotte. You have to remember, there's not too many areas in the province in New Brunswick that's had to go through what we've had to go through. If you look, even just around in Charlotte County alone, St. Stephen and their, and their transition, and St. Andrews and their transition, they didn't have to do what we are, we are doing. We're the only ones, there's only a handful of us in the province in New Brunswick, they had to merge two communities together. And I think we're doing a great job. The girls are doing a great job making sure the bills are paid and making sure that the employees are paid. So everybody's doing a great job, so things are moving forward. We're only a couple months into this, but I could say it's, it's a lot, a lot of stuff that's never been done before, and everybody's doing a great job. Any other questions or comments?
I can just add to that as well, just, you know, just for clarity's sake, that, you know, when bills come in that are paid, invoices are signed off by myself, but then they go back into our finance department. We have a treasurer, we have an assistant treasurer. Those are entered separately from myself, so it's not just one control point that is, you know, signing off invoices and signing checks. As well, all of the invoices, copies of that, and checks as well, go to the mayor's office for review. So, so there's certainly a lot of eyes on this to ensure that, you know, that there's compliance with, with our accounting policies.
Great. Any other questions or comments from council? Counselor Dedarakas.
This is a question for our CEO. May I ask the question? Just for my curiosity, how much are we paying for the services of Town Suite?
Yeah, it's about $2,500 a year. So I believe that that's, that will go up a bit because we're going to be upgrading our services to sort of a cloud service that will allow us to do better POs even from an app, and as well, give us a little bit more security with, with backing up our accounting system. But, you know, it's anywhere between $2,500 to $3,500 a year.
Great. I'll move on to the old business and municipality redesignation. I may have to get the deputy mayor to take over here soon. We did get a letter from the minister, this, actually just on Monday, and council has been made aware of the letter, but I will read it out for public because we should be doing this, letting the public know what's going on. Dear Mr. Mayor, thank you for your letter of January the 30th, in which you communicated the request of council to change Eastern Charlotte from a rural community to a town. I understand your desire to make this change without any additional work being done. However, there are additional steps required by legislation that need to be taken. A community can become a new type of entity by incorporating as that type of entity, using the process outlined in Part Three of the Local Governments Act. Section 21 of the Act requires that the minister conduct a feasibility study in accordance with the, with the regulations to determine whether to recommend an incorporation or several other types of restructuring. Establishing that, that the community has the capacity to deliver the services required is an important step in, in that process. Creating regulations governing the process and requirements for feasibility study is planned for this year. That work is linked to the creation of a new municipal commission and will not be finalized until after the legislative framework for that commission is created. Please rest assured that we will advise you as soon as this process is established. In the meantime, let me assure you that being a rural community does not mean that you are prevented from providing the level and quality of services that a town or villages, village provides. I recommend that you take the time to consider that any proposal to change the type of local government will require demonstration of the financial plan for taking on any services that are currently being provided by the province. This will include identifying any possible impacts on policing costs and enforcement of dangerous unsightly premises by, bylaws. Additionally, it should be noted that the responsibility for forest fire management within the town boundaries may be a factor for consideration. The Department of Natural Resources and Energy is responsible for forest fire management outside of city and town boundaries. Best wishes to you and the rest of the new council as you move forward during this transition. Sincerely, Daniel Allen. That brings us to correspondence tonight, council. We have two, two items of correspondence. First one is from Anglophone South School District. This is about St. Stephen Education Center Turnaround Achievement Awards. Dear Mayor Craig and members of Town Council, for several years, Anglophone South School District and the St. Stephen Education Center has been hosting their annual turnaround achievement awards. This evening requires middle and high school students from the schools across Charlotte County for making a significant change in their life, either through their academics, attendance, or behavior. It is a great event for educators and families to come together to celebrate the success of our students. This year, the event is being held on Tuesday, May 9th, 2023, at Dominion Hill. As you know, putting on an event for over 100 people can be costly. As an education center, we are tasked to look to our local businesses for support to help pay for this event. We are very fortunate that many local businesses in Charlotte County have agreed to be sponsors of the Turnaround Achievement Awards. We could not put on this event without their support. We have been very fortunate that many mayors from the communities in Charlotte County have attended this ceremony and understand the great gains these students have made in their lives. The organizing committee of the Turnaround Achievement Awards is asking if the municipality of Eastern Charlotte would be willing to sponsor a student and two guests to attend the event this year. Fundy High School will be recognizing two students for this award, one from the high school and one from the middle level. The cost per student is approximately $200 once, once you factor in the cost of the meal, their awards, and other miscellaneous expenses. Having this expense covered would allow other monies to be used to ensure we could provide our students and their families an evening they will fondly remember. I thank you in advance for your consideration in this matter. I look forward to hearing you at your earliest convenience. Sincerely, Mrs. Jennifer Grant, Turnaround Achievement Awards. I would look for council, what is your desire tonight to do with this? Would there be a motion on the floor to send this to Finance Committee with the, you would like to send this to the, Counselor Lee, would you like to move this to Finance Committee? Would there be a second or for that? Okay, I got two. Counselor Thompson, you just beat out the deputy. Question or comment on this motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. I forgot one. I'm sorry, I moved ahead too fast. We're going to move back before we do the next communication. Okay, new business. Date for public presentation by Southwest New Budget Service Commission, number 10. Alex, would you like to come forward?
So there's a recommendation in the planning report in front of council regarding a municipal plan amendment, and this is to do with the rezoning request for Mount Pleasant, on Mount Pleasant Road. I can give a full presentation if council wishes at this time, or if you would like, I could do that at the, the public presentation.
I think we'll wait for the public presentation.
Okay. So yeah, this is just a, a process in order to, to begin the process, and that doesn't mean council's passing the bylaws to, to make this happen. By setting the date for the public presentation, you're just setting up a special part of your agenda to deal with this concept, this proposal, in detail. So you'll look at the bylaws, you'll look at the, the different parts of the proposal, and, and it's just an opportunity to present it to the public in full, to allow the public to digest it, and then give the public an opportunity to reflect on it and send their comments to you, the decision maker. So that's, that's what this is about. If you do set a date, there's a sort of a time limit when the advertisements go out, but what I would suggest is you would just pick your next available council meeting date, as long as it's a minimum of 10, 10 days from now, because that's the minimum timeframe for the advertisement. So, at this time, that's all I'm recommending to council, just to begin that process.
Okay. So you're recommending not two weeks, but four weeks? Okay. So you're recommending not two weeks, but four weeks?
Yeah, if you want to do, if you want to do two weeks, you can do two weeks, whatever your next convenient time is for council. You can set a special meeting for it, or you can just have it on your next agenda.
Okay. I'll leave this up to council. So the 29th is open. That would be fine, two weeks from tonight would be fine. I'm not breaking any rules. So I'm going to leave it up to council. I'll entertain a motion to set a public presentation by Southwest New Brunswick for the, Counsel McCann. Not at this point, no, I'd like to have a motion on the floor.
Well, I was going to do a motion.
No, yeah, please go ahead and make a motion.
But it's not necessary for this. I was moving to motion to table this until I am able to sit down formally with a lawyer to find out if I am in conflict of interest.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to table this issue. We have a second, Counsel Datarakis. Question or comment on that motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Okay, just raise your hands that way I can get it in. Okay, we have Datarakis, we have Hat, Hat Thompson, just everybody. Okay, good. See you now. Okay, so that's it. We'll move on to the second correspond. Thank you, Alex. Okay, the second correspondence we have tonight, to whom it may concern, the New Brunswick Dart Association have 16 individuals that have qualified to play at the Canadian Darts National Championship in St. Hyseth, Quebec in June. In order to fundraise for this event, we'll be doing a sponsored jersey, as we have done in the past, that every player will wear to all the events. Last year was very successful. For $200, your company receives a small sleeve logo. For $300, a larger front logo, or for $500, a back logo. The NBDA will issue receipts for any donations made. There is also the opportunity to have your company name on the actual team NB Dart shirts as a main sponsor. Last year, we had two companies added on the shirts, which each paid $800 for the opportunity to sponsor the NB team. Thank you in advance for your support and assistance, and checks can be made up to NBDA. And it's from Karen Tracy, New Brunswick Team Darts fundraising coordinator. I entertain a motion on this. And you make a motion to?
Defer it to the finance committee.
Great. Counselor Adam Hat. We have a second for that? Counselor Lee? Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, that's passed unanimously. Okay. Okay, and that brings us to number 12, which is the public presentation of our parentess. Please note under bylaw EC-01, section 7.1, members of the public shall be entitled to address council for five minutes with no debate from council on matters of municipal jurisdiction. I just remind the public that this is not a question and answer time. This is your chance and the opportunity to speak to council without us butting in, I guess is a good word to say, and you have the opportunity now. If not, I'll move on to statements by members of council. On Thursday evening, February 23, I, along with our CAO, attended the Southwest Service Commission's board meeting in St. Stephen with all of the other mayors, including our worship Bonnie Morris from Graham and Anne, his worship Danny Cogswell from Fundy Shores, his worship Brad Henderson of St. Andrews, his worship Alan McCackren of St. Stephen, his worship Ken Stanix of McAdam, his worship Harvey Matthews from Campabello, and Jim Tubbs representing the rural areas. On Thursday, March 9, I attended meetings of the whole for the Service Commission in St. Stephen with other mayors of the county. In this meeting, we had a presentation by the RCMP on their quarterly report, October 1st to December 31, 2022. Some discussion was discussed on the amount of paperwork the RCMP had to do on cases compared to what was used, what they were used to be expected. And I'll use an example on this. An impaired driver charged usually took about an hour and a half to complete, whereas today it can take up to four hours for a member to complete that, which takes that member off the patrol to complete that. Most of the meeting was taken up on the discussion of the problem of meth in our area, especially in St. Stephen, and now in Eastern Charlotte. It is a problem that will only be getting worse, which will lead to more crime, homelessness, and death. Meth started out in the USA, made its way north to British Columbia, and now has spread east, and now is in our area. I brought forward the idea that it would be nice for the RCMP to have a member attend our monthly meetings, and their response was that they are only mandated to only report to the service commissions. I responded by saying that in Graham and Anne, that they have a member attend their monthly meetings, and their response to me was that Graham and Anne was different. They did say afterwards that if we sent an invitation, they would see what they could do. So I followed through. The next morning, I sent an invitation out for the entire year with the dates of our meetings to Sergeant Jason Hanson, and I received a response shortly after. He replied that he would pass this on to Sergeant Chris Henderson, who will be back to his role as operations NCO on April 5, and they would pass the request on to their team leaders to try to accommodate us. There will be another meeting with the RCMP, mayors, and the Service Commission Public Safety Committee, which our deputy mayor is a member, on April 13 at the Gashland Center in St. Stephen. As well, at this meeting will be a representation from the Department of Justice and the public safety. The objective of that meeting will be to set new priorities for policing for the upcoming 2023, 2024 fiscal year. Last month, I attended the Personnel Committee, Health Services Committee, four committees of the whole for council, and two Fire Services Committee meetings. As well, I attended, along with all of council, the Quad New Brunswick presentation. And I think one of those meetings, also, we had a presentation from NB Power on an update of advanced small modular reactor and their development on that. A very happy belated birthday goes out tonight to Perry Richardson of Back Bay, who turned 94 on February 23. This past month, I had the honor to present Carson Cook with a certificate of celebration on behalf of council and all residents of Eastern Charlotte for his 100th birthday, which was February 28. Happy birthday to our camera person tonight, Dale Wells, who turned 68 on Monday. And tonight, I want to, on behalf of council and Eastern Charlotte residents, send out a big congratulations to two of the CHCO power brokers, Patrick Watt and the star of CHCO, Vicky Hogarth, who's here tonight on their wedding on March 4 at the Westley United Church in St. Andrews. You can go ahead and applaud. That's nice. These two are a great team at CHCO, and now are a great team on a life together as a married couple. A happy 85th birthday goes out to Dini Hoof, who celebrates this milestone next week on the 24th of March. I also have one more thing I have to announce. It was given to me right before I came in. A fundraiser for Carla Murphy Flag will be on April 1, that's a Saturday night, at 6:00 PM here in this building. And the lineup of Charlotte County talent is Tom and Angela Mason, Josh Osborne, Claudette and Zeta Norman, running out of time, Margaret and Colby McWinnie, and Lori Duo. And there'll be a canteen, there's 50/50 tickets, there's lots of music going on that night, and the fundraiser is for Carla Murphy Flag. Tonight, on behalf of myself and the council of Eastern Charlotte, I send out our sympathies to the families of Daniel Or Danny Hill, husband of the late Lori Hill of Penfield, who passed away on March 1. Our sympathies are sent out tonight to the family of Josephine Frost of Second Falls, who passed away at her home in Second Falls on March 1. Josephine was the former deputy mayor of St. George, Bruce Jackson's mother-in-law. Our thoughts are extended to the family of Donald Needle, who passed away on Sunday, March 5. And lastly, our thoughts go up to the family of June McClanahan, who passed away on March 12. I'll go to my deputy mayor at this point.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have just one thing. The municipality has received a presentation from Quad MB on a proposed route in the St. George area. We are still working with the group on finalizing the route, as they work with other stakeholders such as Dexter Highway Corp. and the Department of Transportation. So it's an ongoing process.
Great. Counselor Thompson. Counselor Hat?
Sure. Couple things on recreation that are going on in the next part of the month here. So first off, I want to say thank you to everybody in Eastern Charlotte for making another successful season at the arena in Blacks Harbor, Patrick Connor's Recreation Complex. And a special thanks goes out to all the Public Works crew that keep that place running and keep the ice there. We wouldn't do it without you. You know, there'd be a lot of unhappy kids with no ice. So this Sunday will be our last day for the season, so March 19. We're already looking forward to, you know, hopefully a new control system to run the ice and be in control of the ice system a little bit better for next season. March 17, there will be a final public skating for the season, 5:30 to 7:30. And as we all know, Friday is St. Patty's Day, so wear your green. Saturday, March 25, there will be an Easter Craft Market at the arena as well. The market will be located on the Curling Club side of the arena. For any information that's going on, on these events, please go to the Eastern Charlotte Parks Recreation page and hit like or join the page. Everything gets posted on that that's going on far as recreation events and anything that's going on in the community far as even so much as hockey games when they're happening. March 31, here at the McAdavid Place, the Easter Bunny will be here, 5:30 to 7:00, I believe. Chris, is that the right time? Okay, yep. 5:30 to 7:00. And as most of you already know, Marvin has accepted a position that was working with us from the Y, and he's accepted a position elsewhere. We're sad to see him go. He's done an amazing job in partnering with the village and now Eastern Charlotte with that programming. He's done a great job. I'm sure his new employment, it's their gain and our loss, but we have, do have a new coordinator through the Y MCA for Eastern Charlotte. Her name is Kara, and if you go on the Parks Recreation page, there's a little blurb about her and a kind of picture of who she is. And anyway, I met with her on Monday, and she's very excited, has all kinds of background in kids and programming and all that kind of stuff that we need for programming to work in this Eastern Charlotte. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And that's Kara with a K, right?
Kara with a K.
K. Counselor Datarakis.
So as our CAO mentioned, the Health Services Committee met on Tuesday, February 21, to discuss Winnie Paul's request for council to consider weekly pickups in St. George as they do in Blacks Harbor. And our CAO contacted Pharaoh and requested them to put a together cost of introducing a fourth week of garbage collection. So we're still waiting on that. Also, on the topic of Health Service Committee, I received a call from Ms. Linda Holmes of Penfield. She's concerned about the lack of doctors in our area, and she's wondering what is the municipality's strategy for recruitment? I'm not sure if we have this information, but it's something that we should definitely look at too as a committee. The last thing I want to say is earlier, I think last month, the council was asked what were our top three priorities, individually, of course. And I just want to share what my priorities are today. The first priority I had was with Brunswick Street. If you were on council before, you know that there's all sorts of complaints about Brunswick Street, about the number of potholes. So I think it's just making sure that council is considering that zone and the work leading up to that zone as a priority. Second is overall maintenance of our recreational spaces. We know that baseball season is upon us, okay? So we need to make sure that the baseball field here is dragged and raked regularly. And we also have to extend that sort of TLC to the other recreational spaces that exist in Eastern Charlotte, whether that be the arena or the skate park. I know there's some complaints about the current floating dock at the Day Adventure Center. Boters have complained that it's incompatible and it's dangerous. The last, my last priority, or one of my biggest priorities, is future-proofing development and rezoning. And what that means is no unnecessary development on agricultural land. Now that we're amalgamated, we shouldn't, this is not an excuse to lose our identity because we're not St. Stephen and we're not St. John. We have to ensure that all development has a high standard of quality of life. Otherwise, it defeats the purpose of building. Thank you.
I'll move on to Counsel McQuarrie. Counselor Lee?
Just wanted to say thank you for coming out tonight. We always appreciate seeing everyone.
Counsel McCann.
I also want to say thank you all for coming out. I see a lot of the same faces, and I see a couple new faces, so that's always good. I'd like to see this place full, but thank you very much for coming out. I also want to send out my deepest, deepest sympathies to the Alan Kinney family, who passed away suddenly last Friday. I know this family personally, and I know that they must be going through a lot, so my heart goes out to this family. Also, on the topic of our priorities, my priority also is, it's no secret, is the protection of farmland. Once it's gone, it's gone, and you can never get it back. So that's my top priority. Another priority, or two other priorities, I guess, has been, from the get-go, from the time I started campaigning as a counselor for council, is seniors. Because without them, this municipality wouldn't even exist. People 40 and over, even 30 and over, have been the ones working, have been the ones paying their taxes, have been the ones putting their money into this community, which has made this municipality what it is today. And without them, then this municipality wouldn't exist. And also the youth. They're the future, and if we don't do something to help our youth and get them off the streets and keep them away from meth, we're not going to have a future either. So with that being said, once again, I want to thank you all for coming.
Counsel Tid.
Just had a couple items here that's already been touched on, but the collective agreement was signed and ratified for the Public Works Department. Interviews took place for the Public Works position, and the successful applicant has been selected, Cody McDonald. And I'd like to thank everyone for coming out.
Thank you. That brings us to number 14, which is the date and location of the next meeting, which is Wednesday, April 19, at 7:00 PM at right here in the McAdavid Place Community Center. I'll look for a motion for adjournment tonight. Counselor Adam Hat. Thank you.